To order. Thank you, Haley. And Haley will be in the background, um, attending and uh.
What would we do without Haley?
I have no idea.
Well, I don't either.
And we have, we have no idea how lucky we are that she is still here. Trust me on that one.
Man, true words were never.
Thank you.
All right, so um, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Thank you so much, Haley. Uh, we do have a quorum. Do we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports? Hearing none. Let me just make this comment then with regard to a chairman's report. So before I forget, I believe the weather forecast for today and this weekend combined for Cambria is somewhere between three and a half and four inches of rain. So just in case, if we get anywhere close to that, this is gonna be very awesome for the well levels, for the hillside screening up, and for our overall uh sense of well-being and just feeling good about.
And here you.
Are me?
You're cut out here.
Yeah.
Oh, I cut out. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. In other words, um, you could hear most everything of what I said.
Yes.
What was you talking about? The rain providing a sense of well-being as well as screening up the hillsides. All right, so do we have any? Oh, um. Also, this is what I do need to report. As we both know, um, Ms. Scott uh was elected to the board, came in first in the recent election, so all of us would collect their hats off or maybe a mild applause to our committee member who as a result is um. Let me just say that Deborah and I had a, a brief conversation about this topic that obviously only one member of the board can be at a committee uh participating at a committee meeting, and that would be the chair. So either Ms. Scott or myself would have to leave the committee. And we decided though, even if Ms. Scott is a bit more qualified than myself to be the chair for her background, that we thought that um because she is just getting on the board and she's gonna have her, you know, her plate with so much to do, that it'd probably be best that at least for the time being that I remain the chair. So uh, you're stuck with me for a little while longer. I hope everybody's okay with that.
Except that now that Deborah, Deborah has to leave the committee?
Yes.
That's not good.
You know, that's, 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 that, that, uh, well, one of you has gotta go and honestly, you know, if I were in Deborah's shoes, man, what, what, everything, you know, that she's got to come up with speed to, to have this too is just, no, 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 that's a no.
So obviously.
Cut out, Harry.
You're not, oh.
You're cutting out, Harry.
Um.
Are you back?
Okay.
You have a walkie internet connection?
Um, I don't know. You know, this is uh, I don't wanna be weird behind it, but this is the uh. No, I think I'm all right. Um. I'm, I'm gonna move to another part of the room here. I don't know if that'll make a difference.
It might. It very well might depend on the strength of your um your router.
Right. Okay. I, oh, no, that's not gonna work.
I don't worry. I'll have to turn around.
Okay, I'm just gonna go back to where I was and uh, my apologies for everyone attending. All of you on the screen and by the way, we have one person in the uh, in the viewing audience and that's uh current but soon to be retiring uh board president Don Howell, in case you're curious. All right, moving, moving forward. Um, so do we have anyone that would be interested in becoming the new uh committee secretary? Filling into the very capable shoes, I will say of um, of Ms. Scott, especially looking at the minutes from our last meeting. Awesome minutes, except for one minor error, which anybody could have made.
Well, so let me just, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this out there so everybody knows. Uh, I'm going to, because there's gonna be a shuffle in these standing committees coming up here. Uh, I'm gonna be uh, uh, applying for the slot on the R and I committee when it opens up, because Michael, I think, I mean, either, either Michael or Karen's gonna have to go, just like same situation here. And I'm gonna apply for the R and I uh open slot. That's what I really applied for way back when, when I applied for these standing committees. And quite honestly, you know, if, if you're asking me, probably my biggest strengths are in that area. Um, given my background. So it would be foolish for me to be secretary at this point, because I think those changes are gonna come up when in late January, Harry, there, right?
Most likely.
Yeah.
January, correct.
So I can't honestly tell you that I would be on this committee past the.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your honesty. Um.
Well.
You're gonna be missed. That's for sure.
Thank you. I, I, you know, it, it has, I'm not gone yet, but that'll have to be decided by the board, obviously.
Right.
Um, um, like I say, you know, um, if I, if I look at my, in my past history, you know, in terms of equipment installation and computers and all this other stuff, uh, even, even in college, you know, the stuff I did. Um, my strongest suits are probably in, in the R and I area.
Well, supposedly it's always the new member gets to be secretary. Remember that?
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, I guess so.
Well, we will just um, we'll wait for the new member and then we'll assign it to them. Their baptism under.
I, I make a motion that we um elect the new person as the recording secretary. But when they, when he or she comes in, she'll be already signed.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Claudia. All right.
That may discourage applications.
All right, well, um.
I, I move, I move that we don't tell any potential candidates that they are going to be the recording secretary.
Correct. Your party's the bird, Jim.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Just kidding, just kidding. All right, so moving on to a committee member communications, does anyone have um, any comment to make?
Um, I, I have a couple of comments to make. Um, one is that um, I met with Ray yesterday. Ray D'Enzo, thank you so much, Ray, for meeting with me. It was very enlightening and he answered a lot of my questions. And then tomorrow I meet with several other staff. So that's really been good.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, it's part of becoming a new, uh, new member of the board and uh, our congratulations once again.
Thanks.
Right, so getting back to, uh, yes, Claudia.
Oh, um, do you want me to speak during public comment or now uh about just miss, a couple of miscellaneous things?
Well, um, I don't know, because I don't know what they are, but. We're, we're doing.
Pardon?
I think since you're a committee member and we're talking about committee members, you should probably speak now.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I did go to the uh, the East Ranch meeting um, at the East Ranch and uh, it was kind of spearheaded by Julie Amade and another person and I don't remember their name, because I don't know them. And it was, I thought it was pretty productive. Uh, I thought there was a nice consensus of what to do with the CCSD property there. I uh, somebody came up with the idea, I think it was, it might've been Mark Garmin, came up with the idea of um, I think it's called Frisbee Golf and uh, is kind of a low-impact kind of thing. Um, the, apparently the the nets for that or whatever, they are, are movable and so it would be a low impact on the preserve. And uh, and then there was a couple of other ideas for some trails and things like that, and they were well received. So that, that group will continue to meet and I think that's a really good move forward. Um, I did a lot of research on vault toilets and um, I'm going to continue to try to somehow talk them into doing vault toilets, because uh, one is a preserve and it really shouldn't be putting in plumbing and electric and all that into a preserve. Two, um, I also think they shouldn't be as large and, and I don't know why. I have to talk to somebody to find out why they wanna have two toilets. I mean, they, they don't, they will never have enough people that, that would be lined up for, you know, miles to get into the two toilets. If somebody has to wait for a couple, a couple of minutes to go to use the restroom, it just seems, I, I just wait, it's, it's a misuse of our funds. Uh, so I, anyway, I have a lot of information about that and, and if any was ever interested in that, I, I can, I can talk to, about, about that subject. Um, and then uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention um is that there was a huge discussion at the North Coast Advisory Council since our last meeting about the Christmas market. And um, I had a talk with, a personal talk with the new fire chief and he seems to be very, very um, I don't know, uh, just very energetic, very willing to, to work with people. Uh, I think it's really exciting that he is really, you know, going after, you know, Dirk and his, its market to make sure that it's not a fire hazard for our community. And um, apparently they were scurrying around doing some last-minute electrical things to make sure that it complied with what he wanted. Uh, so he's, he's a real um, you know, he's real willing to talk, you know, so, so refreshing to have somebody new in place that you can talk to. Uh, we're gonna have a sit-down meeting um about, about a sign that I would like to have re-located, but he's willing to do that. And so uh, so essentially I give you some little, based on some of the things that that are kind of around our town and, and, and let you know that there's some positive things happening. And I think with the new leadership with Deborah and Michael, I think we're gonna see some, uh, some positive things happening uh for our community and, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that.
Claudia, what, what's the name of the group, the East Ranch? What, what's the name of that group?
Well, actually, it was the Fire Safe Focus Group people that were there, I think mostly. It was uh, Kermit Johansson was there and he's.
No, no, that's not Fire Safe Focus Group. It's friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve.
Oh.
Oh.
He's on the North Coast Advisory Council too, isn't he? Or is he not on there anymore?
Uh, I don't know, but I think he was there. He was there basically as a person who was interested in the Trails Committee.
Oh, okay.
The, the, I think that's what, that was his main reason for being there.
Yeah, and I found out that he um, used to work for the park system and he was very knowledgeable about, you know, alternative types of toilets and things like that. So um, he sent me a long, a couple of long notes, uh, his information, but yeah, Kermit was the other person, but there was somebody, there's a woman, I think, that's working with Julie Amade.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention her name. So Julie Amade and Terry Lord, who has lived in town for a number of years. They're both part of uh, Terry is a commissioner and Julie is an ex-official member of uh, PROS. And so they were chosen as the folks who would head up this particular group that wound up uh, having the meeting. I believe it was last Saturday.
Yeah, and also um, Julie is also a, a school board member.
Right, anyway, I think we're getting.
So in the minutes, uh, should I call it the East Ranch Group Meeting?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Is that's me, that's what it, I believe that's how, how it was kind of advertised, so to speak.
Okay, thanks.
So thank you, Claudia, and I'm a little embarrassed because I was also at that East Ranch meeting and also attended the NCAC meeting, and it didn't dawn on me to bring those two up and the chairman's report, so thank you so much, Claudia.
Yeah, I was there too. It was a very productive meeting.
That's right, you were too. Yeah, that, it was very lively and everybody had something really productive to uh, to um, to contribute. There was no doubt about it. All right, so let's um, let's move on further. If no one has any further uh comments to make to uh, public comment. Uh, and since we only have, I believe we only have one person in the audience, and that's President Howell, and he can't comment. We have no oral public comment. However, I do have a written public comment to read. Let me just find it here. So this co- public comment was read at our last board meeting, CCSD board meeting on the seventeenth. But this particular individual has requested that this particular comment also be read here at the Policy Committee meeting. So this is from um, a woman named Linda Prentice. So here is her uh, here is her letter. Dear Board, please consider those property owners who are prohibited from building due to the water issue one of two in one of two ways. Number one, release building ban on fifty water meter positions per year for five years, at which time it would be reconsidered. Number two, cut the property taxes by half on the vacant properties. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Linda Prentice, owner of Parcel, and she gives the parcel number. So I, I have read that and uh, obviously the district has no involvement with cutting property taxes and uh, releasing the ban on building is uh, probably not anything in the purview of the district at this time. Um, but we shall see how things move forward. All right. So um, yes, Claudia, I don't know if we're in the position to be commenting on her letter, by the way. In ca- in case that's why you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I will. I'll hold my comment.
Thank you very much. All right, so um, regular business. First item of regular business are uh, committee meeting dates for next year. And uh, since we're having.
How about the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Not a problem.
With regard to the consent agenda, um, let's do approval of the minutes. And um, they're very, like I said, very extensive and well-written minutes. Um. So I, I have one correction to make. And this is thanks to the observant eagle eye of um Crosby Swartz, who sent me an email earlier today stating that under District Staff Present, General Manager is listed as Jim Weigold. And uh, of course, he's John.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank Gordon. I mean, thank uh, Crosby.
I think I had, I think I had Jim on the brain at that.
Oh, they always call him General Manager and it sounds like Jim.
So does anyone have uh, any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I move, we approve the minutes.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So it was uh, the motion uh, was approved by Mr. Townsend, seconded by Mr. Key. Anybody not in favor? It appears as if this is unanimous. Uh, approval of the minutes with the one minor correction, so thank you so much. Let's move on to uh, the next, to the regu- the, and item A, discussion and consideration of uh, committee meeting dates for the twenty twenty-three. So um, anybody have any, are there any times when people that are, yes, Ted?
Um, it, you know, what we're doing right now works fine for me. That, that's, that's, that, you know, I, I have a fair amount of flexibility. Thursdays are good. Um, you know, we moved it, I think, from one till three, I believe, at one point in time. One, one o'clock, that's okay by me. You want to do it at three o'clock, that's okay, or two o'clock. Um, so, you know, uh, unless anybody um, else has a lot to say about, you know, what day of the week, I, I can't do Tuesday, but um, you know, uh, that's just me. So um, yeah, I, I, you know, perhaps we can make this pretty straightforward, I will.
Okay, yes, uh, Claudia and then Jim.
Um, do we have a list of whose um, terms are coming up, you know, or finishing or? Don't we have turn, don't we have term?
I believe, I believe uh, everybody's just coming up in February of twenty twenty-three, you know?
So.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, I mean, I, I suppose what I would suggest is that we approve uh, the date and time for our meetings and then uh, we know that we'll have to probably redo that with, if, with new people on the policy committee uh, when they come on board, whenever, whenever that is.
Right, I, I, I wouldn't disagree with that, but we have, we have no idea when we will be having a new uh, committee member. Uh, we will be asking for applications, I would imagine, at the upcoming board meeting and then go from there. So Jim, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, just um, throwing it out there regarding uh, the, the time during whatever day they decide to have the meetings, we decide to have the meetings. Um, we might wanna consider doing them earlier, like in the morning. Uh, three o'clock or one o'clock time kinda shoots the heck out of the whole day. Um, from my perspective, not, not a big deal one way or the other, it's only one day a month. But uh, if, 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 if folks wanted to do them at nine or ten in the morning, um, that would, that would allow people to sort of schedule around the rest, the rest of their day.
Yeah, I, I don't know about nine o'clock. I think most of us would probably be comfortable with ten o'clock. Um, so.
I was gonna suggest seven, but I thought that might be a little extreme, huh?
Well, no, it wouldn't be extreme. You'd just, you'd just be sitting in the room by yourself for three hours until the rest of us showed up, but um.
I do a lot of that now, Harry, so you know what the heck.
So does anybody have any follow-up comment on, on Jim's suggestion of doing the meetings in the morning? Yes, uh, Gordon and then, well, Ted, kind, doesn't.
It's, it's fine. At ten o'clock in the morning works for me too.
Okay, Gordon, you had your hand up and then Claudia?
Uh, ten o'clock would work, but uh, the afternoons have worked better for me, because I, a lot of times work in the mornings. But it'd only be one day a month supposedly, so it could probably be worked around.
Okay. Claudia?
Uh, well, if it's on a Thursday, I can't, I can't attend, so. That's kind of why the meeting's kind of got moved to three o'clock instead of two o'clock is because I go to San Luis every Thursday.
Fair enough.
Uh, but, you know.
Well, you know, you're a valuable member of this committee. So, you know, we make every effort to accommodate the needs of, of folks on the committee. And uh, I certainly understand how, you know, Jim's concern with regard to meeting at three in the afternoon does kind of put a halt, but it is, as, as most everybody else says, it is just one day a month. I guess we all need to be flexible in that regard. Okay, so.
I, I could, I could do a morning if it was another morning, but I don't really have, well, it's possible.
Well, we're, we're gonna keep it on Thursday. We're not gonna dink around with the day right now.
Okay.
Um. So.
I could prefer Thursday too.
Tentatively, we will be staying at Thursday at three o'clock. And uh, when we have a new board member, maybe we can reconsider uh, the, the time of the day, so.
Got a question.
New committee member, yes, Gordon.
We've always had concern of whether it was the fourth Thursday or the last Thursday of the month. Is that important?
Well, um, the fourth Thursday, actually, I just checked it beforehand and there are actually um three months where there are five Thursdays. But we should remain, I think, on the fourth Thursday of the month, because uh, making it the last Thursday might be a little bit too confusing, I think. So keeping it as the fourth Thursday, except for obviously Thanksgiving, I think might work a little better, but how does everybody feel about that?
Oh, that still works for me.
Okay. Right, any, anybody else have a comment? All right, so tentatively, we, they will, our meeting day and time is the fourth Thursday of the month at three o'clock. And uh, thank you for all, for your, all for your flexibility and understanding.
And, and may I just add that uh, keeping it on that fourth Thursday might be in the interest of, you know, some, some people who have been thinking, you know, they'd like to attend the meeting, when is it, blah, 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 if it needs to be on the fourth Thursday, well, keeping it there, you know.
Right.
Remember if they wanna come and join us, which I hope they do.
I do. I, I think I'll, I will um, with regard to people attending, we should prob- I should probably call uh, Michael Calderwood as soon as this meeting is over to find out uh, have we become too boring for him? Anyway, it's just a joke, just a joke. All right, let's move on to regular business item three B. Continue review discussion and consideration of CCSD board discussion and consideration of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regarding Policy Ten Thirty Code of Ethics. This is obviously an old business item that we, the board have visited on numerous occasions. So um, I think that uh, we should start this off by certification with regard to, and this is something that obviously Mr. Townsend has investigated as to needing to have a code of ethics policy to apply for our transparency award. And I think this is part, could be part of this uh, regular business item discussion. So let me um, hand this off to um, committee member Scott um, with regard to what, regard to the discussion that she has had with um, with Acting General Manager D'Enzo, and also to let you know that um, Haley Dodson may also be contributing to this particular discussion, so um, Deborah, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, um, Chairperson Farmer. Um, the, so since Claudia and I, and then Jim joined us in an ad hoc committee kind of a thing, um, I thought I should follow up and find out whether or not we got information back uh, from the, the letter of request that Chairman Farmer put in. And so I contacted Ray D'Enzo and he he directed Haley to send me the information that was requested. And so um, they sent those, those documents to us. One of them is um, the backup. It's the District Transparency Certificate of Excellence and it was the basic requirements. And so there's a list of all those requirements. And then Haley also sent us a copy of the um, actual application with each of the requirements checked off, off. So um, I'm thinking that because because they are being presented here during this committee, that we possibly can send all of those documents to all of the committee members. Would that be correct?
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, um, because I think you all need to take a look at it. And the general, and, and then I'm gonna have Haley talk about the application process, because she actually was the one who filled out the application, but. But the answer to the question about an ethics policy is that it actually was a requirement. It, but what the application asked for was either an ethics, ethics policy or one on board conduct. And the, the information on board conduct, um, is in the bylaws. And so, um, the bylaws are pretty specific about board conduct. So, before I go to the next point of what I want to say, Haley, do you have anything to say about the application process?
You pretty much covered it exactly how I was going to present it. Um, I did want to let the committee know that I did post the application that I prepared on the district's website, um, which I can share with you just so you can see where it's located at. Let me do that. Okay. So if you go onto our website, this is our main page. Um, and you can click on About Us. You can scroll down to the District Transparency Certificate page. And I posted the application that I had prepared when I completed it. And you'll notice that there's some basic requirements that I had to complete, some website requirements and some outreach and best practices. And like Deborah said, one of the, um, items under other policies was Code of Ethics, Values, Norms, or Board Conduct. So I contacted the Special District Leadership Foundation regarding this item because we don't have a Code of Ethics um, policy or anything about values or norms. But outlined in the Board of Director bylaws, they do have a section regarding board conduct and they said that we would qualify based on section five of the board bylaws. So that's what I, um, applied for, um, with, with the application, not a Code of Ethics policy.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does, does, does anybody have any questions for Haley about that?
Um, yeah, can you give us the link to that, um, uh, the section by, five of the bylaws that has that, uh, code of conduct?
Yeah, let me share my screen with you. I'll actually show you. So it's right here, five members of the Board of Directors. And it's five point two. Board members shall at times conduct themselves with courtesy to each other, to staff and to members of the audience present at board meetings. And the Special District Leadership Foundation actually said that the entire section five would qualify under that item.
Yeah.
Well, that, that.
Okay, so, so anybody else have a question for Haley? Okay, so this, this is, this is what I want to say about that. Because I did review it too. And the bottom line is, what, are you laughing at me, Ted? Okay.
Oh, I, I'm anticipating what you're gonna say.
Okay, so, um, the only problem with what's written in the bylaws is that there are no consequences for people who do not follow the bylaws.
You mean, you mean people that are not courteous?
Yes, and that, and then, and it doesn't define what that means. So, um, I think that the board does need an ethics policy. And it needs to outline specifically what those behavior, behaviors look like and it also needs to have a way of responding, uh, to someone who doesn't meet the requirements of that policy. My own opinion.
Jim?
So I think.
Hold on, Jim, and then it looked like Ted and then Gordon.
So I think the, the, um, of course, my concern was based on a written communication that I received from the Executive Director of the California Special District Association assuring me that having an adopted Code of Ethics was a requirement of, um, uh, of, uh, securing one of their certificates of transparency. So it did, that, that, that information did not come out of thin air, as, as you might say, it was, it was provided to me by the Executive Director of the organization. I think probably the most important thing to remember here is that the, uh, California Special District Association and its affiliated foundation that actually hands out the certificates. Um, is a trade association, kind of like the, 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 the Association of Realtors or something. Uh, they're not any sort of a governing body. They don't have any authority or, um, influence over how any of their members behave. Uh, they're like a, a sort of a, a chamber of commerce, as it were, for special districts associations. Um, and I think, uh, when they air, they air on the side of um, be really flexible in their requirements to secure this, uh, certificate of excellence. Um, um, this transparency certificate of excellence. And to that end, I think at the end of the discussion, I would, um, I would, uh, make a motion that the policy committee recommend that the, uh, Board of Directors of CCSD uh, return that certificate of excellence in transparency. And still such a time as they can demonstrate, uh, actual transparency, uh, in their communications and activities. That's the end of my comment.
Okay, before I go to Ted and Gordon, I, I want to make this observation and I'm only doing it, I'm only interrupting because I'm probably gonna forget by the time Gordon gets done talking as to what I want to say. And my apology, my apologies for that. I just know myself too well right now.
Um, yeah.
If I.
I have a que, I, I'm sorry, uh, he, he made a motion?
No, 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 I said at the, at the end of this discussion, I would consider making that motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Claudia. Um, if I'm not mistaken, we actually received this transparency award in twenty twenty-one. It just wasn't acknowledged with something in person from the CCSDA until, what was it, earlier this year? Um, and from what I understand, while now, um, having a Code of Ethics policy is a requirement. It wasn't when we applied for this award a year and a half ago. I believe that is the case. And I'm not quarreling with what you're saying, Jim. I'm just making this slight correction and Haley can jump in if you, uh, if need be to, uh, either correct me or, or confirm what I've just said.
Um, yeah, so I would like to, um, clarify, the award was given during a board meeting to John Weigold from CSDA. And I don't remember what month or year that was, because it's been a busy time here. Um, but I don't know what the current requirements are for this transparency, um, of excellence award. But at the time, it wasn't a requirement for us to have the ethics policy. Like I said, it stated code of ethics, values, norms, or board conduct. And so the district determined along with the Special District Leadership Foundation that we would qualify based on the board of conduct outlined in the Board of Director bylaws.
Right.
And I would like to not see our award go away because I worked really hard for that, so.
Yeah. Well, if nothing else, Haley deserves an award.
Thank you.
All right, so Ted and then Gordon and then Claudia, if you wish to speak.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank Jim for his sleuthing on this, uh, on this issue.
Yeah.
And once again, Haley Dodson has saved the day for, uh, the district. And in this matter, I think that she has been absolutely transparent about what the situation is with, with the board and, and what exists. If what exists has been vetted by the CSD people, I personally see no reason to go back and relitigate this at this point. I think the important thing though is that it does point out that they are expecting an ethics policy for any further transparency awards. So that's, that's, that is, in fact, if I may, a new development uh, for these types of awards from the CSDA. I just, you know, I just want to say that, that, you know, an ethics policy, it's as the CSD has put out, you know, an ethics policy is sort of, you know, just sort of a bedrock thing that, that organizations have. You know, I mean, I, you know, if I look at the, at the policy we've got there, it doesn't cover anything, for example. I mean, uh, as far as ethics is concerned, the very reason I did not run myself for a seat was because, you know, I've made an angel investment in, into the, um, uh, the piece of equipment that's gonna come up here for the, for the pilot project. I mean, the, the investment that I made in GWI is literally being uh, used, uh, in part to, uh, construct the device that's gonna come up here for the pilot project. Now, that, whether or not that's an ethics violation.
I mean, your conflict of interest, I mean, the conflict of interest.
Yeah, whether it's a conflict of interest, I'm not sure. But I can tell you this much, nobody, but nobody is, is going to put, you know, corruption after my last name. And, uh, uh, so, you know, that, that ended it right there. Um, so I just think that having, whatever happens with this ethics policy, I think it needs to really be, you know, really be quite clear about, you know, what, you know, where people's allegiances can be and so on and so forth. It needs to be more comprehensive than, than, than what I'm, what I'm seeing with, and I'm, and I'm okay with this code of conduct. I mean, I don't have any problem with that, but I honestly think it should be succinct. It, it should be included, if you will, in, in a, in a real ethics policy. And I, and I've believed that since the beginning and I still believe it.
Oh, thank you for your comment, Ted. Gordon, you wish to make a, make a comment as well?
Well, it's a previous, people have mentioned that, uh, does have its pros and cons, but the, um, the assignment that we have is to make a, a book of policies. And a book of policies is what we've always stated for a year or two ago, whenever we put this on the board being ten thirty, that'd be one of the earlier codes. That, uh, the board was always resistant to pursuing that. And we felt as Jim does, that there's probably some more details that's definitely lacking in the, uh, Board of Conduct. Two paragraphs or three paragraphs, it doesn't say very much of anything. So I'm definitely in for, uh, explaining in more detail. And as mentioned, there should be some consequences, uh, that would fall if one didn't, uh, meet these wonderful standards. So transparency certificate, I agree with Jim, which should be pulled, but it's, uh, a little bit too late, uh, to worry about that and let that slide, but the big, it can't wait to move forward with.
Well, let's just say, we got this award ahead of time. Uh, in the sense that I have a feeling that as time moves on into twenty twenty-three, we definitely will have deserved this award. Uh, Katie, I think you wanted to make a comment earlier, to look that way.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that I found the board meeting agenda that CSDA had come out to Cambria. Well, actually it was via Zoom, but they presented us the award at the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two board meeting. So you can go to the website and review the meeting.
I, I had a feeling it was earlier this year, but I wasn't quite sure. Thank you very much, Haley.
You're welcome.
As always. Claudia, did you wish to make a comment as well?
Well, I really think that, well, from my experience, I've been around for a long time, longer than, well, except for Harry, been around longer than everybody.
And Gordon's a little older than I am.
No, I mean around Cambria. I've been here for years. So Harry and I are the, the old timers. And there's, there's been a history of, of suspicion, uh, you know, of the CCSD for a long time. And I think that's why this, this award is so nice because it makes it sound like, like, you know, they've changed their ways. I don't think it really matters what a word the CCSD has won. If they don't, if they don't behave in a transparent way, it doesn't really matter what you call it, if there's an ethics policy or not. But over and over and over again, there's been people who have belittled the public, they belittled their board members. They've, they've, they've behaved atrociously. I mean, I, I'm not speaking out of, out of order because this is all public information. I mean, it's just.
Only public information, it was observed at board meetings.
Well, exactly, you know, it was observed, so it, it doesn't really ma, I guess it, it bothers me that, that an award like this was given, no matter the criteria to a board that is the most untransparent that, that probably exists, you know, I just, you know, I mean, there's.
You know, it, it, I, I'm not gonna disagree with what you've just said, Claudia, however, um, to be perfectly honest with you, and I am as guilty as anyone of sometimes staying in the past and remembering behaviors of folks, especially including since I've been on the board, um, but this is my feeling, and there are members of the public that are dismissing what I'm saying. You know, the proof is in the pudding, so to speak, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a new day dawning for obvious reasons. And I think I'd prefer to say that the upcoming board and, uh, people in positions of responsibility will prove that we have a quality, and we used to have a really bad reputation in this county and throughout the state. This special district. And I'd like to think that, that is no longer, that will no longer be the case. And, uh, I'd like to stick with that. Um, but I understand your comments as well, Claudia. Uh, like I say, it's a new, yes, and Jim, Jim is, uh, when I said something, uh, Jim got to me, he said, uh, he was thinking about the Who song, um, you know.
Won't get fooled again.
What, what was that from, from, um?
It's from Who's Next.
Who's Next, yeah. Um, so go ahead, Jim.
So, I, I totally agree, um, that that the, the, the community in this committee should be looking forward instead of backwards. And I see nothing to be gained by, uh, some sort of a, a gotcha activity, uh, particularly given that the, 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 the folks that that might be primarily directed to are no longer in a position to be got by, uh, by the, the good citizens of, of Cambria. Um, however, however, I, I've also, uh, and I haven't been around nearly as long as, as, as almost all of you. But this is not the first new day that has dawned, uh, after an election for the CCSD board. Um, uh, but I'm still, you know, waiting for the sun to come up on that, on that new day. And so I do think that, that regardless of the transparency certificate um, and how it was obtained, under what conditions it was obtained. And I'm doing good with my language because the first word that came to mind was pretenses, then I use conditions instead. Um, certainly no knock on the fabulous effort that Haley's done all these years and months to try to hold things together there in the office. Um, I do think that as a matter of policy, it would behoove this committee to present something to the incoming Board of Directors with some specific um, suggestions as to how they could actually be a transparent board as opposed to, uh, be awarded a transparency certificate. And, and to that end, I would maybe instead of making a motion that we ask the board to give the damn thing back. Um, that maybe the ad hoc committee can take, uh, the, the, the next month to come up with a group of maybe seven or eight very specific questions uh, for the board and staff, uh, that might demonstrate uh, their commitment to transparency. Questions would be things like why has it taken, you know, years and years and years to complete an application for the um, um, the operating permit for the WRF, uh, and, and an answer of, well, it's hard, would not be an acceptable. And, and an answer of, well, it's hard would not be an acceptable answer to that question. How much exactly have we spent on the facility? How much does the board, does CCSD spend maintaining the Fiscalini Ranches? Oh, oh, a bunch of questions like that, that are really simple, straightforward questions that any competent municipal organization should be able to answer quite quickly. And so that would, that would be.
Code of Ethics, this isn't much about being more open with regard to how the ratepayers' monies are being.
It's, 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 it's demonstrating transparency as opposed to professing transparency. If I, if I shaved my head and put on my saffron robes, robes, and get my begging bowl and walk down the street, you know, chanting Hare Krishna, and then kick that homeless guy when I walk by him on the street, that, that's, that's professing Buddhism, but not practicing it. We want to, we want to stop professing transparency and start practicing. Want to encourage the board and staff to do that.
In other words, action, not words.
Yeah, wouldn't that be a novel approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. That's what I was kind of alluding to.
Yes, Ted?
Well, look, I, you know, certainly can't disagree, you know, with Jim. I mean, you know, we should be able to answer, you know, our district to be able to answer these kinds of questions. I think that's maybe a little far afield from the ethics issue that we are addressing directly. So, so, you know, you know, I think Jim's speaking more globally than just the ethics policy that we, that we've been addressing at this point. And by the way, Hare Krishna.
In a very courteous manner.
Yeah. Hare Krishna is Hindu, not Buddhist. Go ahead.
Right, right, right. I got that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Yes, Deborah.
Yes, um, here, let me lower my hand. So I think that we have been assigned to do a needs assessment for an ethics policy. So is there someone who would like to write up a needs assessment to send to the board so that chairperson farmer can forward that to the board?
I'll do it.
Okay.
That was going to be my suggestion, since Mr., Mr. Townsend is more involved in this than anyone else. And so to be as passionate as anyone.
I would, I would suggest that, that, that I will go ahead and draft the needs assessment, but someone else should probably edit it and keep a, a fire extinguisher handy when they do so.
Yeah, I think we know what you're referring to there.
Well, I wish I could do that, but I think it's going to be a conflict of interest for me to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, someone else.
Yeah.
You're up.
That, that's the role that, that Scott Anderson handles in our little, our little protect Cambria group.
Yeah. Well, committee member Scott, I appreciate you kind of stepping in here in the last five minutes as co-chair to make sure this meeting runs efficiently. So thank you so much. So anyone else have any, any comments to make on this particular business item? I don't believe we need to take, make any kind of motion.
Question?
I think we need, yes, go ahead, Gordon.
Should there not be a public comment on this or not?
Well, thank you so much. Once again, I was aheads in mind stepping in. Well, it would be nice to get a public comment. Unfortunately, the only member of the, of the audience, excuse me, the viewing audience, attending audience is not able to speak. So, I mean, not able to speak at this meeting because he happens to be current board president.
Are you back on or not?
Pardon me?
Harry, Christine Heinrichs would like to speak, and she's in the attending.
Well, she apparently just arrived. I just saw participants came up. We now have 11. Christine, go right ahead and wel- welcome you and the chickens. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I, I've been listening to your discussion and I thank you, Deborah, for pointing out the fact that this is really about a needs assessment. And it's very clear that the board needs a policy, not only because it needs a policy, but because this checks an important box and shows that the board is serious about participating in a professional way. I, 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 it's hard for me to grasp that there is any, any opposition to this whatsoever. So I certainly recommend you to do this, and I'm glad that Jim has stepped in. Jim, if you need any wordsmithing, I'm always available to help.
Or fire extinguishing, maybe.
Or fire extinguishing, yeah.
And I'm not sure, Christine, that you'd be the right person.
Fire right now. Right? You know, this is, it's not only a transparency is also a very important point, but that's somewhat tangential to ethics. The board needs an ethics policy. This is something that every competent organization has. Please go ahead and do it. Thank you.
So I think what's being encouraged here is that perhaps we do, and I imagine this does fit into this business item, that once again, we get a motion and a sec, and a second to consider doing a needs assessment for a code of ethics policy. Does that begin?
Harry, point, point of order. Haven't we already been assigned that task by the Board of Directors?
Right. Okay.
So I don't think we need a motion to do that. I could be wrong.
Thank you for having my head, helping have my head turned on straight again.
The, 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 the guest that may not speak would know the answer to that question. Can he nod? Can he nod his head or shake his head?
I can't see him.
Oh, okay.
And I, I can't hear anything moving, so I'm not really sure.
Okay. So I will, I will, I will draft a short letter as to why the CCSD Board of Directors needs to adopt a code of ethics and forward that to Harry for his review and distribution to the committee.
All right.
And I'll do that prior to the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion in a second for Jim to do that?
Can, can we like maybe hear what I have to say and then make the motion? Because I've had my hand raised for like a while.
Well, I didn't notice you had, oh, up in the corner there.
I use the, I use the little hand thing. Next time I'll just go like this. I only have one comment in that when Jim is drafting his letter to the CCSD, I'd like to mention the CSDA award and that one of, as being one of the reasons, just one of the reasons why we need to have an ethics policy, because we want to comply with the current form, the current criteria for the ethics award.
And, and, and just as a point of clarification.
Words, excuse me.
The criteria has not changed.
Oh, I thought that, that ethics is now part of it, that they had to have that.
That's what the, that's what the executive director told me in the communication that I forward to everyone. But the checklist is the same. It hasn't changed. The criteria hasn't changed.
I see your call though, Jim, and, and Mr. McCormick's letter to you, it's kind of not necessarily understood. I think he used another term. It's kind of understood that a special district has a code of ethics.
The, the term he used was requirement.
Okay.
And, and that was a standard practice.
Standard practice.
Yeah. That'll all go into my, that'll all go into my.
Okay. So do we, do we need to have any, excuse me? Is somebody, is somebody talking? Is somebody talking and I can't see them?
Probably.
I don't hear anyone now. So do we have any more discussion on this particular business item? Or are we finished and with the understanding that Mr. Townsend will pursue this and draw up why we need a needs assessment?
Do we need to make a motion?
Seeing no.
I don't think so.
Seeing no response. Let's move on to future agenda items. I have one, but let me hear from the rest of you first.
Well.
Yes, Ted?
Well, one of the things that we discussed last time was going over the quick check checklist, the policy handbook checklist and what those checks mean. So I, I, I don't know if we're going to do that today or if, because obviously we don't have the, the, the checklist for the public to view today. So I don't know if it's okay for us to do that. If we can get clarification on those check marks today, then I would say that for the next meeting, we, we would do the, the full meal deal on, on, on where the policy committee is on completing the task of updating and placing the policy or the board handbook on the CSDA platform.
Well, if I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I sent out a collective email to all of you committee members, letting you know that I had talked with current President Howell, who along with Director Gray was that the one that brought up this policy checklist. And President Howell has offered, once he becomes just a private citizen, to attend our meeting. And so he can therefore give us some serious clarification with regard to what we need. He'll, he'll, he'll assist us because of having been the person that helped draw this up, that he would provide us a lot of guidance and support in working on this. So we will be putting this on the agenda for our next meeting on the 28th, I believe it is, the 28th of December. And he will be attending the meeting, and this will be a major order of business at that time. Yes, Claudia?
We, you know, we all have, those of us who were on the board when Don was our chair, we all have a copy of that document, of that spreadsheet. So, but I think it probably would be prudent to ask Don to send it to, to the new, to our committee now, because not everybody has a copy of it.
Ted?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a copy of it right here in my hand. So, but yes, I mean, you know, we definitely should redistribute the policy handbook, quick checklist, to make sure everybody's on the same page. My only comment is this, that if, you know, if we do have, I mean, to make that conversation more productive, you know, if, if, if somebody could tell us what the difference between no action, staff review and board review is on that policy handbook checklist, what that actually means, it would probably facilitate our conversation on the 28th. So if it's, if it's possible to get that information, at least, you know, some definition of those that, in my suspicion, is it would facilitate our conversation on the 28th. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on this future agenda item? Yes, Claudia. Claudia and then Gordon.
Ted, that document you have is just two pages long.
Yeah, the quick check, the quick checklist is only two pages long. The rest of the thing, you know, the, the detail thing is 20, 27 pages.
Very okay. You held up two pages and I said, no, the one that, that Don did, I, I did, not with, with, with Tom Gray, the one that Don did, it was 27 pages. So, yeah.
Yeah.
That happens to be in our agenda packet for our October 27th meeting. So if you, if you just want to go back to that meeting and pull up the agenda and go to the back, it, all that information is in there, just to let you know. But we'll make it available for the next meeting as well.
Um, man?
Go ahead, Ted.
Um, just for clarification, you know, Claudia maybe knows, I, I, I don't, I don't mean to assume anything other about what you know about this thing, but the detailed inventory is the 27 pager. And then the quick checklist is the, is the two pager. And in order to facilitate our, our conversation on this, the, the, the two pager checklist has these, has these no action, staff review, board review, and then the actual inventory pages, which is 27 page long, has a detailed information on it. So when we get around to discussing this thing, we would definitely want to be able to refer back to the policy inventory pages to see if there's detail there that, you know, that's pertinent to our discussion on any specific policy.
All right. Thank you, Ted. Anybody else have any comments on this particular, yes, Gordon, I'm sorry. Thank you, Gordon.
Well, I agree with what Ted's indicating and what your agenda says, is if Don's going to be there on the next meeting, that would be very productive. And to supplement that, to have his definitions, since they wrote up the definitions for what each one of those categories mean, it would be good if he could supplement that with any more details that he could to find what each of their responsibilities are by the headings before the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Gordon. So I have one other. Yes, Haley?
I just have one question, just back on the calendar, because I'm preparing the calendar for 2023. Did you guys decide on a meeting date in November, since the fourth Thursday falls on Thanksgiving?
Thank you. Once again, I made a note of that and, well, it, it obviously didn't stay in my brain for very long. So we could either meet on the 19th, excuse me, pardon me, wrong month. We could either meet on the 16th, because of course that's our board meeting. So we won't be meeting on the 16th. So it'd have to be the 30th.
The 30th?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Haley. So I'm going to make another suggestion with regard to a future agenda item. I don't think, I want Ms. Heinrichs to think that I totally forgot about her comment on having a whistleblower policy. So we will address, be addressing that at some point in the very near future. Okay? All right. Anybody else have any comments? This has been, this has been a productive meeting. I want to thank all of you for your comments and for your guidance through this meeting. It's been very much appreciated. The meeting has lasted, let me see here, since we started at 3:07, a little less than an hour and 10 minutes. So thank you all so much. Deborah, this is your most likely last meeting as a member of our committee. So I think a, a mild, a, a round of applause or two thumbs up or whatever. I'm going to thank, thank Deborah for not just contributing wisdom, but also being board secretary. Couldn't have made it without her.
Well, and the other thing is, and I, I don't know who y'all voted for, but I appreciated, I have appreciated all the support that you guys have given me during this time. It's been, it's been, it warms my heart.
Yeah, I, I want to say.
Every single time I think of something. Thank you.
Claudia, you want to, did you want to make a brief comment?
I might, I wanted to clarify something, because if this is Deborah, is this your last meeting, Deborah? Then what happens to our little committee? Is it going to be Jim Townsend?
Yeah.
And me, or just Jim Townsend or whatever? So just kind of, so if him wants help, I'll just let him know I'm around. Okay. But Jim's, Jim's taking the lead and Christine's a great editor, you know, so. So great. Thank you very much. And I am really sorry to miss you. Why somebody half as good you are to report?
I do hear voices in the background.
It might be Christine talking to somebody.
It is. Thank you.
If my, if my, if my draft letter, Harry, if my draft letter needs to be toned down, I'm sure I could get Tina to help me with that. I'm sure I could get Tina to help me with that.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you.
To tone down, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ted, Ted, you put your hand up there?
My wife is one heck of an editor, let me tell you.
All right. Well, I just want to make this. Deborah, you are, you are going to, Deborah, you are going to be missed, but this will still continue to be, and I don't think I'm going out of line here, of the three standing committees, the one with the most character and then in parenthesis, an S. We definitely kind of everyone on this committee is a bit outspoken, slightly opinionated, but definitely adds just a lot of color and flavor and a tremendous amount of information to whatever it is that we're discussing. And my hat's off to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Everybody have a, a real nice holiday season. See all of you except for Deborah on the twenty-eighth. And many blessings. Enjoy this, so this rain that we're getting, it might be close to four inches of rain, and how blessed would we? That, that's our, that's our holiday gift, is this awesome rain that we're getting, so.
See you tomorrow, Deborah.
Yes, it'll be fun.
See you soon, Deb.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great weekend.
Moving on to the next meeting. Thank you, Harry. Great job.
Bye-bye.